We'll call the meeting to order. Clerk call the roll, please.
Gary.
Here.
Danco?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Shire?
Here.
Mayor Beadie?
Here.
Never.
Keeping me triggered. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I don't have any. I would go make a closed session. A closed session, let's make that decision later, it's on the agenda. But if we get worn out, then we can just wait until next week.
Okay. I'm good with that. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. If you have comment for council, please come to the podium, state your name. And we do have a three-minute time limit. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to action items. Item one, ordinance 202544. An ordinance annexing portions of the Circle Drive subdivision into the city of Streeter. Can request a motion and second, please.
So moved, study.
Okay, Mr. Reed with the motion and Mr. Gary with the second. Any discussion?
The only thing I would point out to council is that the effective date of the annexation is January 1st, 2026. We don't want these people to get hit with a tax bill for 2025 proceeding taxes. So I coordinated with the county supervisor of assessments and they refined with that petition.
And this has gone through? It do have? Went through court?
Yes.
So we have completed that as well?
Yes.
With the petition filed. And then also, I know garbage, waste management would be affected January 1st as well.
Yes.
Any comments or questions from council? Clerk call the roll, please.
Danco?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye. Item two, resolution 202544. Resolution in support and leverage of the city of Streeter for a proposed US EPA grant for a brownfield assessment. You get a motion and second, please.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Danco with the motion and Gary with the second. What's your problem?
So this is a, we did this last year with using our consultants, A3 Environmental consultants, put together an application, we weren't successful last year. They're going to put it again this year at no cost, because they weren't successful again last year. There's no match for a $500,000 grant. It'll go towards additional testing and things on the north half of the Smith Douglas site for future remediation, so we can get in line for funds to actually remediate. So recommend to be approved and hopefully we beat the threshold this year and we can get some something going out there.
Comments or questions? Okay, Clerk call the roll, please.
Danco?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye. Item three, resolution 202545. Resolution appropriating an additional $80,000 of MFT funds in connection with the Iowa Avenue roadway project under the provisions of Illinois Highway Code. Can you get a motion and second, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. Gary with the motion and Mr. Reed with the second.
So this is appropriate $80,000 MFT funds, I'd like to say that wouldn't have to be here to do it, but so we had some additional things come up, there were some few small spots in the road and additional commodities for driveways and sidewalks, so requesting another $80,000. So as that project nears its completion, we can close it out with this date once it's done. We're looking at the final paving on Friday, so that's getting close, so yeah, a successful project, once we get it up and running, so.
Any comments or questions? Have we had many speeding complaints? Usually when we fix a road, we get...
We've had a few, that's something that may come back. Couple of the residents there have requested a stop sign at the roof right there at the big loading dock between the two. It might be something that we should consider, because they do get moved pretty quick in there, so it might come back at a future meeting.
All right, Clerk call the roll, please.
Danco?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye. Item four, mayoral appointment. Like to appoint Andy Urbannick for a term ending in, should be 2028. June 2028. You get a motion and second.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Mr. Gary with the motion, Mr. Danco with the second. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Danco?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye. Any city official comments?
Me, Red.
You're good?
Good. You?
I'll keep it going.
Let her rip.
Keep going. None, any from the table? We're just so excited to get into the budget, we have no comments for you. So we'll introduce Stephen Evans to the council regarding our 2026 budget.
Do you want to kick your hair off before we jump in? Well, for two of you, this was a very packed, busy budget meeting. You should have all received the draft budget. The purpose of tonight's meeting is for the department heads and myself and the state to kind of give you the overall initial request. If you were to compare the revenues and expenses in the general fund, for example, we're showing if approved as-is, which I'm not recommending, $1.27 million or more in the deficit. So obviously, changes are going to have to be made. The reason why I'm presenting a budget that's out of balance is because you need to know ultimately, these are the larger needs of the city and we have to decide what our priorities are to get it into the budget. If I presented a balanced budget tonight, you wouldn't have had access to that information. So each of the departments are going to lay out their requests and we'll go line by line. And then you folks answer whatever questions you think are appropriate. And then we'll, at the end, go over revenues and give you a tax subject proposal. No decisions, you don't need to make any decisions tonight. If we have another meeting scheduled, what's our next budget, a week from today? We should have a recommendation to you in terms of what cuts we need to make. If you have any things you want to add to the budget, that's good to know. As soon as you offer that, so next week, so that we can get that together for the final approval this summer. What we don't want to have happen, and it happened a couple of years ago, is the night everything has to be approved, and that's why decisions, you know, is for that. Because everything needs to get into the proper form, so that when it's approved, then vote with the county. And time is strict, we have to prove everything in December. Where it's all approved, the county and the state. So with that, should we just go through, give anything to add, Stephen?
No.
No. Okay, then jump in. So will we be calling up the departments one by one, and probably best to just start at the beginning? So we have plenty of favorites.
So if we start on page 12, we'll hit the general fund, the city council department first, this will be a nice quick one. And we'll try to do it as coherently as possible. We will do some jumping around, but we'll try to keep it as in order as we possibly can. So on page 12, with the city council department and general fund, not really any changes. The only one of note on that page is we are going to bump up the meetings, conferences, travel line. There, it looks like there were a few more conferences and some more trainings attended this year with the anticipation that that will continue into the future, so we're going to bump that line up. Otherwise, everything else is very minimal, so we're talking to work around across the whole, that whole department. And unless there's questions, that's all I have on the city council.
I think the only thing that happened was we had more people go to the ML conference this year, so, which is good, good.
Absolutely. All right. And then on page 14 is the administration department.
Yep, everything is pretty much the same for admin, with the exception of a few of the contracts being raised, a thousand or two. And postage being raised because of the increases, but other than that, everything else is pretty much the same for admin this year. No additions.
Yeah, we're budgeting for 911 in administration. Contract with the county, the county to provide that service for us, bringing up a little over 3%. Public transportation is a donation we make for the city of Ottawa. We belong to two different economic development agencies.
I do know the President Cat, they have not done so, but they may be coming back for the higher risk or higher ask for next year. That was just from one of the, I think, two, Caffin and Mexico.
They do a career?
Yeah, they're doing their strategic plan and things, so.
But we always give them $5,000, that's what we've done in the past.
Well, actually...
I know, if it happens, it happens, but...
This program would not be available to our residents in the city of Ottawa. Instead of actually organizing, funding, and overseeing this program, this is not a county's program, this is a city of Ottawa program. In order for Ottawa to get their grant from the government, they need to provide a regional transportation service so that that involves other cities and itself. But we should probably be more than help in that area, if people struggle with things.
No other questions on admin, we will take it over to the fire department.
Mayor, council, what's your intention to retire your duty next year? Captain Park and myself prepared the budget for this year, Captain Park has asked to present that to you, so I'm going to let him do it if you're all right with that?
Congratulations.
Thank you. You want to start? All right, I'll be started. I did print some things out for the council, you guys can look at something on paper, so just what I say. There you go. So looking at what we need in the fire department, most everything that we're looking for is going to be right online with everything we've had in the past. The biggest thing that you'll see in the top line is a deputy chief position. Something that we've discussed through the years at the fire department. There's a lot of, there's a lot of benefits to the job, obviously, we know that there's a high cost as well. The idea of the deputy chief position would be someone to slide in and work in administration, other than the fire chief, to provide almost 24/7 type of overseeing of the city as far as an incident commander goes in the city. We're seeing lots of, lots of EMS calls and fire calls that are requiring an incident commander on the scene. And right now, it's not reasonable to ask the fire chief to be available 24/7 essentially. So that's kind of where it started. There's obviously plenty of, plenty of things that the deputy chief could do as far as administration as well, to take some things off the chief's plate. I know he's had, he has a lot of, a lot of things to do now, EMS, EMS service, recording, that type of thing. So you'll see that there are some bullet points under that. The, we estimated the additional costs in the department would be like around $120,000. Essentially, we would have to hire another firefighter to replace the deputy chief position and then move forward from there. That would be the majority of the cost. So that was number one, I'll talk about that a little bit more as we go along the budget. Any questions on that, right off the start? Anybody? Okay. If you have questions, please, please shout them out. There's not a whole lot of changes in the, in the budget itself, so the first one I see is on item 665. And that's going to be an increase in our telecommunications. Telecommunications, I believe that's on page 19. We're asking for some more money, because our dispatch is going to go completely StarCom instead of the HF. StarCom requires a usage fee, and so our fees are going to go up for approximately $5,000 for that. Everything else generally is going to be about the same. Education training is the next thing that we're asking for, for our raise on. We've got several, we've got several other, several positions to fill. We're going to have at least two people retiring this, this year, we're assuming, and possibly three. We're going to have three fire academies. We're hoping to pay for one, one more paramedic tuition, so a firefighter can become a paramedic. And we have cost as well as contractual requirements to fill the officer positions. Also addition, most grant funding has been canceled recently for, for all classes that we used to use grant funding to to fill, to pay for most of the bikes that we took, so we anticipate that was going to cost an additional $20,000. We did have an expert increase in travel because of all the training, meetings and conferences and travel because of the mileage it's going to be required to travel down to West Champaign. And then at the, at the preliminary budget meeting, we talked about combining a lot of accounts. We have, we have an emergency fire department account essentially and an EMS account. And we basically decided to just merge the accounts for some of the things. You're going to see some of the, some of the things in the budget are at zero, but the fire department account is going to be a lot more than what we've spent in the past. The reason for that is because those accounts have been combined. So the first one that you'll, you're going to notice is gas and oil, just fuel for all of our vehicles. Gone from $12,000 last year to $21,000 this year. And that's just because we combined our fire truck vehicles with our vehicles, gas and oil costs. And you'll see that several, several different line items for that have been, have been changed, so. Next thing that I'd like to talk about is maybe the, possibly the purchase of a utility pickup truck. We do have a need for utility trucks to kind of use around town as, as moving on bows and that type of thing for fires. And we came up with the idea that this truck could also be used for mileage, that we can send people down to trainings and it would greatly decrease our mileage costs. Instead of paying firefighters mileage on their own vehicles, we could have a department vehicle that would probably pay for itself in two or three years by saving the mileage costs, so we estimated that would cost around $40,000 to do that. And then the next thing is possibly a training center building. This is something that we would understand if this is cut. At some point, we'd like to discuss a training center building, the training center to help with mechanical type of things to help with our training center. That, the cost of that is going to be around $130,000. And that's something that we would define not doing this year, but we wanted to get it on your radar, it's something that to consider in the future. And last but not least, wanted to bring it to your attention that in the next year or so, we're going to need to order a new ambulance to replace the older ambulances. So the bottom line there, you're going to see new ambulances for 2027. We discussed, we discussed options for manufacturers. That payment won't be due until 2027, when we take delivery. But it will, will need to be ordered in the first part of 2026 in order to get it in 2027. If that makes sense.
So the cost of that's not in this budget?
The cost of that is in the budget.
Oh, is it? $350,000?
It's $350,000, yep. The cost of that is in the budget, understanding that it will come out, because I just want to make sure that everyone was aware that the cost is coming. One thing that I didn't talk about, I just, just... Yeah. So yeah, so our anticipation is that the ambulances will be on a five-year rotation, so that right now, we currently have three. So every five years, we're hoping that we can replace a different ambulance. You know, just, just based on the life and the wear and tear of a vehicle. About five years is the average life of an ambulance these days, so, or 10 years is the average life. So after that 10th year, we can move to third ambulance in order to observe rolling. So one last thing on your, on the sheet that I provided is the Zoll monitor lease program. Currently, we have three Zoll monitors. A Zoll monitor is a cardiac monitor, and it's pretty much single-handedly responsible for our cardiac save rates, which have been outstanding the last three years. We have two of those monitors that are getting close to the end of the life. They're eight years old, and in the next year or two, they'll need to be replaced. They cost about $35,000 to $50,000, depending on what you're looking for. We've approached Zoll, we've got a bid for a lease program that will provide five monitors to the fire department instead of our three now. Those five monitors will cost $50,000 each year for the 10-year lease of our loan, or 10-year lease. And that'll include all maintenance and service of our monitors, which does cost us a little bit now. In addition, through those 10 years, we'll be able to upgrade our monitors one time at our discretion, after, say, new technology comes out or something that we need to, we want to see on our monitors, we'll be able to upgrade. So like I said, a new monitor costs $35,000 to $50,000, and so the next, in the next couple of years, we'll have to start replacing those. Our idea was to get out in front and to lease five monitors, we'll have two additional monitors. Each, each unit that we have will have a monitor on it, which is going to make a difference in the community. And we'll go from there. Questions on that?
Can we operate, we have three ambulances, two are frontline, one is a backup. In addition, we have what's, what we call an EMR, emergency medical response, and that's for firefighters. Actually, we'll go out to either try to stabilize the patient prior to revival of an ambulance or to assist an ambulance crew. And so there could be monitors on fire apparatus as opposed to ambulances. We're currently in negotiations with the fire union over increasing the responsibility or the capabilities of the firefighters. Many of them are licensed as EMTs. We have a couple who are licensed as paramedics. Because of state law, if firefighters are performing EMS duties, then the city could lose the right to contract out for those services. And so we have a contractual issue that we have to resolve before it's actually crossed that line. We're working with the union, I'm optimistic that we'll be able to resolve that issue. But in any case, this would be used to replace current monitors in our ambulances as well as making the monitors available on our equipment. There are times when we have multiple calls, our two ambulances are out, and we have to call in ambulance box at the time. It'd be good to be able to run that through ambulances with fire personnel.
Thank you. Perfect. Yeah. Last thing I'll say about that is that Zoll has offered us a trade-in for our current monitors, our current three monitors, and we'll get around $30,000 if we decide to go with that as a trade-in for the cost for the first year, so. That's everything that I have, so if you have questions?
What do they cost to purchase, I'm worried?
$35,000 to $50,000, depending on what kind of, what kind of stuff, what kind of things you're getting on. So, yeah. Obviously, very expensive, but also very, very, very necessary for cardiac save rates that we have.
I know we have an EMR, a fire truck on order, one that slated was 2028?
I think we're a year into a four-year waiting. So we have a bond that was used, 20 years ago, the city incurred debt, the fund, the construction of James Street Park and the Golf Course clubhouse. That debt will be fully repaid in 2027, so the revenue stream that's currently allocated toward that service will be available to either curb and debt or used for other purposes. We went ahead and ordered the fire truck, knowing that we'll have to, most likely, it's going to be delivered.
I was...
Pretty sure the fire truck, fire truck was, they give us four years in 2025, so 2029 or so, it'll be available, yeah.
And you can't borrow the money too soon, because there's federal arbitrage restrictions on these money. You might interest you can earn on that money while you're waiting to actually spend it.
I'm just, just wanted to make sure we weren't, we have the ambulance and the truck, we'll set the same period?
Yeah, well, hopefully, you may have to finance an ambulance or two, for all that in the next five years.
Thanks, Frank.
And then next, we'll turn it over to the police department.
Hi, good evening, myself, the deputy chief, we're going to pitch in and chime in whenever, we're together to discuss our increases. As we talked about on our October 20th meeting, our biggest expense we've asked for is the vehicle expense. We need another squad car, we need a car to place, Kathy CSO vehicle, had to go 100,000 miles. So it's a $90,000, $50,000 increase. A lot of everything else is simply upgrading technology that continuously gets old and has to be replaced. Requesting 11 G-TAC, G-TAC laptop computers, nine of them will be outfitted to squad, and two extras. Also with the docking stations, that are another, almost $9,400, for a total of $28,862.
Oh, and the reason for us to start with laptops, the reason we need to upgrade our laptops is with Microsoft and Windows, they stopped service with Windows 10. We currently have Panasonic toughbooks, CF31s. We purchased those about a year and a half ago, refurbished, because our original house, it were outdated. When Windows decided to do the Windows 10 upgrade, they changed the game, they started changing what software you could use. None of ours can upgrade to Windows 11, so they've become viable, but so we have nothing else.
Are those, are those in the squads?
Yeah. So shopping around, I'm working with Connecticut, going, Nate, the G-TACs are well-developed, well-organized, and well-regarded, right underneath the Panasonic's. These will get us through several years, several updates, as opposed to just barely buying. If we upgrade, just put nice level in the Sonics. And of course, since we have the HAVIS units in our cars, that makes mounting the computers easier. $1,000 to mount it, so it's expensive. However, if we had to put a whole new unit in, we're probably about $35,000, pretty much.
Another expense we've had to upgrade is our dues and subscriptions, a $16,700 increase in the flock cameras. As you know, flock is constantly upgraded, and now we have live camera additions, so. It's a valuable crime fighting tool that we need, and all cities need, and it's used very effectively here. You'll all remember when I first got here, our first murder, murder we had here, the gentleman drove all the way to Memphis, and he was tracked on flock cameras from other states, other cities, all the way to Memphis.
Is that per camera, or is that...
No, no, with, with that is, when we purchased our last four flock cameras last year, we had budgeted for that payment, and we had already put...
No, no, with, with that is, when we purchased our last four Flock cameras last year, we had budgeted for that payment, and we had already put in that request, twelve thousand dollars for this year's. So we've moved the money to the dues and subscriptions. We've added another forty-five hundred into that, because like Chief said, there's a live view for these cameras. We feel there's three cameras in town that we could really benefit, and a live view to where we get twenty-four seven hours on. To give us more eyes in town and to give our officers access to them.
Like we said, most, most of our increases are coming from just upgrading our technology, technology gets old so quickly. They come up with new programs, and we just don't, they're not compatible, we'll be asked, we have to make a decision here.
As a council, if you go to Flock, they have on their website where you can sign up for webinars, and you can see what new technology they have. And I've gone, sat through a few of those, it's really interesting to see what's available, so. A little more intact than can give you.
I'll, I'll start going, did you saw my line just so, we fly through it. If you start on page twenty-four, we'll start six fifty-one, software maintenance, we're asking for a six thousand dollar increase in that. That's the paper, iCry, Flyer, Quicket, which is our digital ticket writing system, well, several other softwares, programs that we use throughout PD. Every year, these costs keep going up.
We just picked up Quicket this year, and everybody else is using it, so we had to get into. And it allows us electronically to issue citations, but I'm furious with.
Yeah, we did, yeah, we do, we're doing a rest for everything, there, there, now, you guys can do that in your car, and everything's digital, so we're getting away from the paper for most things. Let's see, no changes in print and publication, license and registration fees, same, six fifty-five, no changes. Fifty-five oh-three, no changes, tracking services, nothing. Water, we're going to leave that the same, we have a large increase in telecommunications, we have the same issues with the fire department on that. We use Starcom, and we also pay our spilling fees out of that, spilling is our cab and portage system, that's what we dispatch through, that's what we respond to calls. Spilling is owned by Motorola, they don't have to charge per call. Our call line goes up, including our proactivity and everything else, so we've noticed an increase, a steady increase in that a year. This year, or actually next year, Motorola's talking about upgrading spilling to a more web-based, to where it's an app-type system, where you can per-pass. We're hopeful that goes through, we might limit some of our costs because some of those spilling fees that we pay are the things we don't use, like the jail system, we have a different system. With limits to how we use the jail system, we've done. Build and repair maintenance, no changes, machinery repair maintenance, no changes. We lowered our, it's six sixty-eight for out of vehicles repairs and maintenance, we lowered that by five thousand dollars. Last year, we have forty thousand dollar budget because we weren't sure just how many things we were going to need to contract out, since our cars were getting older. We feel we've got a better idea of where we're at there to where we can rip, take five thousand off this for next year. Six sixty-eight oh-one's for rental vehicles, it was brought to my attention that we've been paying seventy-two hundred dollars a year for the last three or four years. We never changed the budget to six thousand, so that should say, we'll keep the checks and balances there.
Any, I don't know, you don't have time, but Starfour is ending, do you know where it wants, I don't know if that impacts anything with rental cars?
I see that, that's my change, they have approached us about that, that I do know that.
Online, so you may want to, that one might be pricing, or saying what else you can get.
Yeah, I was going to say, I know that in the past, they haven't been using our rental vehicles, though we use, use vehicles from, this is similar how we were with Walsh. If we need to, worst-case scenario, I know that Walsh in Ottawa is doing the same thing for City of Ottawa for their tribal officer. That's where our rental vehicle is for, it's for our tribal agent, allows him to covertly change vehicles at times as opposed to city buying vehicles, and it quickly burnt up to where everybody else wanted.
Sometimes it gets burned, and we gotta make a switch quick, just to keep the officer safe.
Six sixty-nine, no changes, six seventy dues and subscriptions, that's a large one, that was us moving, that's moving the money for Flock from the original amount, the original account for when we had installed into the account that we pay for the yearly service. Education and training, leaving that the same, higher education, same, means the same, pounds the same. We lowered the police and fire commission by two thousand. This year, we've got a promotions test coming up for respective sergeants, so we'll be going to them on that. But we're, we're not doing as many testing for the hires, we've got a list right now with ten on it, and then we've got a lateral list of four, so we're comfortable right there. Start rolling all other tests, but it's only twenty-five dollars a test, only a few red, and the interviews are done at police and fire for me, so. No change to our uniform and the line of events. You'll see that weapons and holsters, it showed that we had gone over budget on that, and in the account for, last year, we had gotten the ALIAS grant for new tasers. We were refunded fifteen thousand dollars from ALIAS, it doesn't show that in the budget, but we actually received a check back for that. We just recently got our yearly update because we pay yearly for our tasers through this fund. We've asked to add two minutes, because we'd like to purchase five more Taser tens and completely phase out Taser X twenty-six. Twenty-sixes, they're single-shot cartridges, they're running almost fifty dollars a cartridge now, to qualify officers, only they need to shoot that three times, so you're looking a hundred and fifty dollars just to qualify officers. Each Taser that carries two, the math is about three thousand dollars a year now for qualifications. And we've talked to Exxon, forty, it will cost us forty-two hundred dollars over the next five years to purchase five more Taser tens. That includes cartridges for training throughout as well as through their program, if a cartridge is used in, on duty, they send us another one, no cost to us. It's a good program to use.
I would also add, the Taser ten is a much more effective non-lethal device than the X two-sixties.
Gas and oil, no changes, office supplies, we, six hundred dollar increase on that one, odds to pay for media camp as they started charging us.
Your sort of boxes downstairs on the TV.
Six thirty-three, over six, six thirty-three on some. We asked for a thousand dollars on that, just due to rising cost of office supplies, which I don't, just following the inflation. Six eight-three, machinery and equipment, that, that is with the purchase of our laptops, it's where we figured that into. Eight three oh-eight DUI equipment, no changes, software, no changes, vehicles, it's just a ninety-three five, it's approximately sixty thousand dollars for a.
One squad.
One squad car, and to get it outfitted, to have Nick put our cameras in it, and finish that, the S's to strike a hundred or over sixty grand. So we want to budget that, then thirty thousand dollars to get Kathy, our CSO, new vehicle. We, in the past, what we've done is we would retire one of our squads, give it to Kathy, use for purpose of the CSO vehicle. This year, we just don't feel comfortable doing that because the squad will likely be getting rid of, it's getting up there in age as well, and we're not getting much cost or benefit in doing so. I hope, don't we get another year out of it, we just put several thousand dollars into the squad to keep it running just throughout this year. Kathy's car itself is way beyond its life expectancy, it's very high mileage, and we're just trying to keep, just keep it going, so. We don't need an explorer, like Chief said, or something, just more of a smaller, older ride vehicle that she can get. She can do her job here in town as well as drive to Ottawa, as well as Jolie, that she makes lab runs for us for our investigators. No change to our capital items, then, that would be it for the drug fund. If you guys have any questions on that.
No question?
No question?
We didn't put any additional money for the CAF's grant for funding new officers?
No, we still have everything, it was by the shutdown, we had put in for the CAF's grant back in July, we put in for the potential three more officers. And if it was granted, they award forty-five thousand dollars for salary per officer per year for three years. Federal shutdown, we were hoping that we were going to have an announcement October first, kind of throwing it off, so we, we're still to win if we're going to be offered, awarded this grant at all.
And may not here before it can be here.
And then after that, three years, do we have to maintain?
We have to maintain for one year after that, yes, so it's three years, you maintain for the fourth year, then after that, if you went through attrition or anything, you could then do so.
How many would you like to add?
Well, I get three.
They give us three, we want three, why not?
You don't want to ask me a number.
Is there a repeat time on, replay on a new squad?
No, we.
That can happen within months to a year.
If we were able to, if, this was granted for a squad car, we could order it soon to January, or we could put it off a few months. It, it, there's not a wait, about three years ago, we waited by year, we put our order in in January, we didn't get it until that next January. That was due to a lot of COVID issues that we ran into, not seeing that as much anymore. Most of the time, the dealership, we go through moral brothers, they usually have squads online, if not directly available.
And I know you have, they have the state, I have the state bid, so we're going to have to competitively bid, we can just go through that, because the states are already done, so that's the next part.
Good.
Overall, our fleet's holding up decently, our biggest problem is recalls right now.
Thank you.
Do you guys want to do the drug fund as well while we're?
All right, all right, that's back on, back of the pack, page eighty-six.
This one is really easy, we're not asking any word, much at all on this one, only to be changed, we're asking for is to re-implement SWAT training. SWAT line item. So what it's labeled here as is six twenty point oh-one, six twenty-seven, under weapons and holsters, we actually like to have their renamed as SWAT. We re-up, we're in the process of re-implementing our SWAT team, the guys raised a bunch of money to start purchasing their own gear that they need for the department. We've gotten other ballistic vests, they've ordered helmets, they've ordered most of the equipment through fundraisers, however we'd like to have a line item to the drug fund in order to. Yeah, supplement other things that are needed throughout the year. Because a lot of that's just Ollie here, maybe Usher, and stuff like that, we're not looking for much expenses out of it. With our drug fund, the only other big thing we pay for is that's where we pay for our K nine expenses, we're not asking for any changes in that, but that is regularly funded through the drug fund.
Do you know what the current balance is?
I don't have the exact number, but it's, it's over a hundred thousand, I don't know the exact number. If there's no questions on anything for the police, then we can go to public works.
You start with animal control?
That's back on page twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven's the cover of the page.
Animal control is not a whole lot to ask, overall, it's probably as much or less than we had this year. Just the general animal control, six sixty-five oh-one, that's just kind of the general catch-all, includes all the, all the costs incurred from vets and our drugs for tranquilizers and parts for all that and everything. Some of that's gone up, some of the vet tranquilizing drugs have gone up considerably in the last two years. Go down to gas and oil, that one's actually, I'm asking for considerably less than that in the past because we now have a gas, unleaded gas pump at Public Works for her to be able to use. But I didn't allow some in there because she does travel out of town, and you know, if she's on a call and then, you know, needs to use the gas card, you know, on the other side of town or something, that's way more convenient for her. So there's still a little bit in there for that. I think that's really about it for the department. Then we'll go on to Public Works, twenty-two forty. I've, I'm still making, you know, changes to this, my budget over the years, there's a lot of things that didn't make sense, there's a lot of things that were just kind of lumped together. I've made new things for, there's quite a few line items that we've never really, that I've never really used, because I don't feel like I'm really pertinent to anything. One of them is like printing and publication, we don't really use, we haven't used that in years, so I've seen no need for it, so pretty much deleted that. Medical drug testing's not the same. Just to note some things, you know, that are kind of things that just go off by themselves, of course, six sixty, six sixty point zero-one, electricity for street lighting, that one just keeps going up and up. Because you all know with your electric bill at home, it's us just the same here. Six sixty-six point zero-zero, City Hall, we didn't really get it done this year, but it's still a need for the generator here at City Hall, so I can put that, that money in there. Hundred and fifty thousand. Traffic signals, repair and maintenance, this is one that, you know, the numbers spent for the year don't always reflect what we've actually spent out of pocket because a lot of the money gets reimbursed from IDOT, although this last year, we did go over considerably, we had an electrical short fry some computers out at Karen Drive, which would be Walmart intersection out north, which affected, which affected communications with the other three, two lights, or the other two signals out there. So we spent a little bit out there, and this next year, I'm asking for a little bit more because we have, when we had a major power outage over this last summer, basically, we had every intersection from north of Fourth Street was dead from that power outage. And we had to go out and put up stop signs at all those intersections, which was a little cumbersome to deal with at ten o'clock at night. That being said, we, I went through with the electrician, and we've determined that we need three new battery backup systems out there. Couple of the other ones just had some, needed some new batteries, they, they did come on, but they didn't last as long as they should have, so we've already fixed those. So basically, that ten thousand is, the normal cost that we usually have plus, I think it's thirty, I was quoted about three thousand dollars for each one for the new battery backups. Six sixty-six oh-four, the incubator, didn't, haven't really spent much money down there, but. Six-sixty-six oh four, incubator, uh, we didn't, haven't really spent much money down there, but with the new, uh, the remodel job coming that is still happening, uh, I'm, I'm fearful that we're gonna, when they start at the boiler job, that we're gonna run into some things down there that weren't anticipated. Or things that wind up breaking because we've touched it. They have things like six-six-sixty, or six-sixty-seven, machine repair and maintenance, that doesn't belong in public works, we have mechanics line items for that. News and subscriptions, we don't really have anything in there. Education and training, there, there is, we haven't been doing anything out of that, but there's a possibility we could be, uh, responsible for reimbursement for some CDL training coming up next year. Uh, tree replacements, six-seventy-four oh two. There's, we've, I've talked about, most of you, or you all probably know about the tree, big tree removal contract that Jeremy talked about later. I feel like we probably should get back into planting some new trees of some of the parks and park areas. As well as a couple more, uh, for the tree beds downtown, have some trees that are, round one, I took care of the worst of the worst, there are several trees down there, and those tree beds that are not very healthy at this point, so they're gonna need replaced. So all these other line items, I've basically, they've stayed the same or I've adjusted for inflation or what we've actually been spending. Six-twenty-two zero zero, gas and oil, that one is considerably higher than what it has been, but when we get to, well, I already pointed out one, the animal control, that's a, that's gonna be included in this number for the most part, as well as, uh, the mechanics. Line items used to have gas and oil in there, and I've just separated it all out into, into one gap and one line item. Then we get down to a couple of big ones, uh, six-thirty-three oh two. Rehab for park shelters, there's a hundred thousand in that line item, that's continuously, if you decide you wanna build the shelter out of Merilla Park, the pad is. Then we get down to the, the big ones, uh, six-eighty-three zero zero, machinery and equipment. I have in there, uh, for one four-wheel drive mower, um, we've gotten a lot better with some of our mowing equipment, but those four-wheel drive mowers that we have that we need for ditches and the hills and all that kind of stuff. Uh, I think the newest one is probably a twenty, ten or twelve maybe, and they've all got four thousand plus hours on them. They've been, they've been dialing back, so I put in there for one of those, uh, we need to look into, seriously looking into replacement of our, uh, motor grader that we use for grading alleys. Uh, it's beyond its useful life and there is no parts for it if we have a major failure on it at this point. Vehicles, uh, six-eighty-five zero zero, I just put in for, for one pickup truck, replace one of three pickup trucks down there that, I wish we could replace all of them, but if we could do one at a time, it's better than nothing. Uh, six-eighty-seven signage, it's not a big one, but, uh, put in there for, uh, this is, this is for signs that we can't bake in-house, decorative signs, park signs. There's been talk about redoing the, the Merilla Park sign area planter out there, so I put in an amount for that, and then the signage down at Merilla, or Meritor Park is pretty old, crappy, falling apart. That's, that's all the major points in public works. The last one I have would be, uh, the city mechanic garage management, twenty-two forty-five. I really don't have a whole lot of major changes in this one. Increase status quo. Except, with the exception of that six-twenty-two zero zero, which basically I just left the amount in there for actual purchase of oils, which would be hydraulic fluid, engine oil, those kind of things.
Any questions on any of those before we turn it over to Jeremy then?
Yeah, I got a question, what time does this meeting start? Cause I seen on the internet six P M., what did they brief?
Five P M.
Oh, five, okay.
Tonight.
Tonight only?
Yeah.
But usually it's six P M., correct?
Plan commissions at six and council would be at seven.
Okay, so, this is finances of the town right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and where would I be able to get a copy of this?
Um, when we, the budget book would be at the front desk, when they're, when it's ready for review.
Okay, so none of this is written in stone yet, correct?
No.
Have we written in the annexation of the solar field on, uh, brownfield or something?
That's already been voted on.
When was that voted?
Tonight.
Yeah.
Well, not in annex, there's no annexation.
What are they doing about this? Is they coming in, or are we allowing it?
Well, we did have, so, I'm not gonna, I won't add too much, but, um-
That's what I'm here for, ma'am.
Okay, public comment was at the beginning of the meeting, um, we annexed part of Circle Drive into City Limits, that passed. Item two was a grant for the Smith Douglas for a brownfield assessment, and that also passed, the grant request.
So we gave them a grant to do a assessment on land, correct?
No, we are applying for a grant.
Okay. The town is applying for a grant?
Yes.
Through that company? I'm sorry, if I sound-
No, it's okay, we are, we are applying for a grant through the US EPA so that we can assess the property as a Douglas.
Okay, and where is that in correlation to the stamp, this would be eastbound, correct?
South, southeast.
Southeast, over by South Street or the Fort Tex Street, correct? So over by the-
It'd be south of Ten Street. South of Twelfth Street.
South of Twelfth Street is where it would be annexed, and how many acres is it?
It's not, it's not annexed.
Okay, how many acres is it, Henry?
It's, the city already owns the property.
How many acres is it?
A hundred and twenty acres.
A hundred and twenty acres?
The city annexed it, uh, the internet years ago.
Okay. I'm just asking.
This isn't a solar farm, is that what you were asking about earlier?
No, I'm wanting to know if that's the process of what's going in here, or what we're doing with the land going forth, if it was to be accepted, and it does pass your inspection or grade level, what would be our next plans with the land?
Well, the city already has ownership of the land.
Understood.
Um, so this is assessing it because it was, like, considered abandoned property, it hasn't been-
We have a lot of them though, ma'am.
Yeah, it's been-
Like, there's one right on the main drag of twenty-three that we've been looking at boarded for a goddamn year or two.
Yes, so this is out in the country.
Right across from the cigarette depot, I don't know the address, I also wanna know why there's semis parking in town.
Semis can park in town.
That's odd, cause I get in trouble if I park in my car and I don't drive it.
If you would like, if you wanna sit through, we can, I can answer some questions at the end.
Yeah, yeah, I was told by the street police that I'm gonna address my issues here, maybe they might go further.
Okay, so we're gonna keep going through the budget, but you're welcome to stay and we can discuss at the end, okay? But I do have-
They don't seem many of the townspeople are here, and we had asked how many townspeople are actually here?
I live in town.
I live in town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they're on the board, so they're both on the count, does it?
Well, you voted for me, P on the-
I didn't vote for you, guy, don't say it, thank you.
Someone did.
Someone did, correct, thank you.
Next time, vote for me, please.
I'm not voting for you. Thanks, though.
Yes, no problem, thank you, we're gonna, so we wanna go through because we've got, yeah, a long way to go.
Lot of corruption, it seems. What about that, uh, truck stop that's going in across the street?
Sir, we're gonna keep going, so we're in, we're just-
Continue the meeting, and after the meeting, if any questions you have, you can address them after the meeting, okay? We have to keep going with the agenda as it is right now, okay?
I just had a question for oil, uh, chief, I asked the chief, I seen the U N A's hardware, I'm buying things, I'm applying company in time.
The mayor, yes, yes. Thank you.
Put your handling vehicle up front.
Okay, so we're gonna keep going, um, are we, what else do we have with the footman garage?
Need to know? Reload.
Anything else?
I think thirty-seven code enforcement, if you're asking.
Thirty-seven?
Page thirty-seven.
Ready? So, uh, so the code enforcement, it's our billing inspectors and code enforcement personnel, uh, wages up there at the top. Uh, six-fifty-two oh one, demolitions, that's the one, fifty thousand dollars we put in, been putting in for the past several years to demolish up to five properties. Uh, if, if we get the, uh, if the grant comes available, we'll apply for the grant again, but putting in fifty thousand dollars there. No major changes, uh, from this year, with the exception of that. Yeah, moving through, any questions on that one? Uh, there is one grant, um, down at the end, it's six-eighty-nine twelve, for a facade grant outside the downtown TIF area.
This is one we, same one or additional?
Uh, same one, same one that we always apply for and we leave in, in case something comes in, not used this year, but if something comes in that's, uh, in the TIF area but not in the, or in the facade area but not the TIF area, it'll be funded there. So, next one, uh, page thirty-nine then, twenty-two sixty-five is the community development department, so, uh, Dean and myself, uh, there, and then, moving down, that, that one's largely the same, uh, the only exception being down there, if you've, uh, just like the other departments, a vehicle, uh, for one new vehicle in line, twenty-two sixty-five, six-eighty-five on page forty, putting in thirty thousand there for a new vehicle for next year to replace the old Explorer I'm driving around in. Questions on those?
May I ask who you are, sir, for the city?
I'm the city engineer, I'm Jeremy.
You deserve a new Explorer, and I agree that we get some demolition done in the town, so I totally agree with this government.
Thank you. Want me to keep going TIF or?
Yeah, if you aren't, if you aren't going to TIFs.
Nah.
TIFs will pick up on page fifty-two.
Start with TIF two, with the TIF one that's been closed.
Good. So, uh, yeah, so, uh, page fifty-two there, uh, the, uh, good news on the TIF funds is that they're all, uh, increasing, so it's, uh, we had a couple of years there where the TIF revenues were down, but they're starting to come back up, so we can fund things like the facade grant programs that we'll talk about here in a second. Uh, but TIF two is the downtown TIF, which will be expiring, I think in twenty-twenty-eight, uh, or twenty-nine, one of those two years, so, coming to the life of that, to the end of the life of that TIF, but there in three forty-one are the revenues. On to page fifty-three, uh, the biggest expense there is gonna be the two-hundred thousand dollars that we, uh, reimbursed to the other taxing bodies as part of the intergovernmental agreements. So the school districts, uh, the county and all those things. Uh, down to line, and then we have, still making payments to Bartoli Chiropractic, uh, Carbo's building, the old Carbo's building, First National Bank down on Bridge Street, uh, four oh nine East Main, and, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts Street or Two, so, still living up to those obligations from previous, uh, agreements passed by the council. So, those payments there from three to ten thousand dollars for improvements they made. And then line sixty-six seventy-five ninety-one, the principal payment on the twenty-seventeen one-point-three-million-dollar bond issue, so we're still making the payments on that. And for interest and principal. Uh, downtown improvements, this is the facade grants, so what we're proposing there is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for next year, which will be, uh, five additional grants, uh, for twenty-twenty-six, as well as, uh, forty-five thousand dollars in payments for grants already awarded but not completed by the end of the fiscal year, so. There'll be, uh, five TIF-funded, uh, grants, and then one out of that that we talked about in twenty-two twelve. And then line nine nine, nine ninety-nine twenty-nine, a transfer out to TIF four, which is the North Point TIF, to make the bond payment there, we'll talk about here in a second. Uh, one thing that's, that we've talked about in our, uh, at the staff level, I should've said in nine, nine 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 twenty-eight, the transfer to TIF three, because of the revenues coming in, that hundred and four, five, five hundred transfer from TIF two is actually gonna go down to sixty thousand, so we won't need that entire transfer, so there'll be a sixty thousand dollar, projected in the year of this year, and then sixty thousand next year, so, just something I noticed in there, but that'll come down. So that's the downtown TIF, any questions? Keep the fun going, uh, twenty-eight, which is page fifty-five, uh, that's the North Point TIF, so the same thing there, uh, down in the, at the bottom of the page, five ninety-nine twenty-seven, the transfer in, instead of one oh four, five hundred, it'll just be a transfer of sixty, and the good news of that is, is when we get to the next page where we're making bond payments, this fund is making more of its own bond payments, which is good, so, uh, that's a good thing. Uh, so then six-seventy-five ninety-one and six-seventy-six ninety are the, uh, principal and interest payments for the two-point-three-million-dollar bond issue from when, uh, the North Point Bond was issued several years ago, uh, for all that work that happened out there, and then, nothing else in that fund projected for next year. Any questions on North Point?
What all work went down there? What all work happened there? Pretty advanced.
Would you like me to answer?
I did not get a question.
May I ask what all work was done at North Point, cause there's new graffiti on the south side of the wall, ma'am?
This would be from prior year, so it's-
What all advancements have been done?
That, um, we have a file that we can, that can be provided, is that this part, public comments at the beginning, so we try to move along with that one.
Okay, so next, uh, fund twenty-nine, uh, page fifty-seven, is the South Industrial TIF, so down at the Vector TIF. Same thing there under, uh, line three forty-one, the real estate taxes, uh, showing an increase there, so the Vector expansion is finally being fully realized in that district, so that's a good thing. Line five ninety-nine twenty-seven, transfer in from TIF two, the two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand two hundred, uh, that is the local match for the incubator project that Jeff talked about, which will, uh, if the federal government reopens, it's, they should give us, hopefully we, uh, get approval to award that contract at your next meeting. Whenever the government opens, E D A- Whenever the government opens, EDA will be back in the office, and they should give us the blessing, we have an awardable bid based on all the paperwork we submitted, so, once they say yes, we'll do that, and so hopefully in twenty-twenty-six, we'll actually use that match money to do that project. So I'll talk about that in the grant fund as well, but, uh, so that's what in twenty-twenty-six, that's the two hundred and thirty-three thousand. Same thing here, uh, line six seventy-three oh nine, we have intergovernmental agreements to rebate a portion of those, so, there's the two hundred thousand dollars projected for next year. Uh, six seventy-three twenty-six is the reimbursement to Vector for the work that they did, uh, so that's the hundred and fifty thousand dollars there. And then six seventy-five ninety-one and six seventy-six, like the other funds, have the bond payments, uh, about a hundred and seventy-six thousand. So, if you, basically, there, there's still some cash there, then the last line, nine ninety-nine sixty, that's the incubator match of the two fifty-seven. There's two hundred and thirty-three coming in from Tiff two, making its way over to the, uh, grant fund. Any questions there? Okay. All right, and then our, what used to be.
Just to question him. Who questions him, so I can speak to that proper person, but sitting here is like defying my.
This is what he's asking the council.
Yes, oh, so this is, so I would have to ask my council.
Because we have to vote to approve on the budget, which will be in, um, well, this is our very first meeting for council to see the budget.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't want to receive the budget too.
If you have a question to ask him, you can ask me, and I'll ask him.
Okay, we're going to do.
Ask you, and you'll ask him?
What do you want to know? I'll ask him for it.
We're having improvements of.
I'm, I'm sitting here trying to learn, sir.
No, it's okay.
I'm trying to learn where your money is going.
We appreciate you, and we appreciate what comes in.
I'd be more than happy to take this pressure and ask you at home, right now, if you, if you have one, I'm more than happy to do that.
Well, the tax, so we're waiting for handouts from the government, correct?
We're waiting for money to be returned from the federal government, correct?
For the incubator project, we're getting a, roughly, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar grant from the federal government to redo the armory, the incubator.
To fix the inside, correct?
Correct.
Correct the outside structure, just the inside?
Just the inside.
Right, okay. Okay, so that's coming from, so we're waiting for that to be fixed?
Yes, the federal government is giving us almost a million dollars to.
Vote for about all these.
That was, it was one question. Let's go on to the next item, and then after that, if you have a question, I'll entertain it. Deal? Fair?
Now, now, where can I put these in writing and have an attorney at this point?
I would be more than happy to take anything that you have in writing.
Do you have a status card, so I can have it addressed properly to you, as I work six days out of the week?
I do.
Thank you. I mean, I'm just getting off eleven hours right now, and so I figure out, thank you.
So, do you appreciate, no, we don't have an issue with the hallway.
I don't like this gentleman walking and trying to approach me. Let's go. Thank you. Thank you, Streeter, Illinois. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Ledger thirty, or you keep calling.
Apology stated.
Tiff, East Tiff District.
Uh, East Tiff District, so, again, uh, line three forty-one, real estate taxes, uh, showing an uptick there, so, uh, but thi- this one, it doesn't matter, this is, we've committed a hundred percent, this is the Villas of Hollybrook, so every penny minus, uh, what we paid for to have it administered by Jacob and Klein goes back to the developer until their, till their, until their investments pay back. So, money comes in, money goes back out to Villas of Hollybrook, or, uh, Unique Home Villas of Hollybrook. Questions, and then, uh, the one thing that's not in here is, I think, uh, Julian talked about today, we had to set up a new fund, so there'll be a, another thirty fund, some number of thirty that'll be for the new Tiff, uh, for the Owens' next Tiff.
How long until that East Tiff is paid back or?
I, I think, they, they pretty much get all the increment until like the last two years, and then, yeah, the, the, I don't remember what the deal was for, but it was substantial.
Yeah, what we can't control is the future assessed values of the property, but, uh, the, the, it won't be forecasted, that'll be pretty much everything that.
I think, if I'm not, uh, but it was about a thirty million dollar project, so it was a large-scale project, on farmland, so. Onto sewer, best part of the budget?
I love budget.
All right. All right, so, uh, thirty-one, uh, page sixty-two is, uh, sewer operating. So, big line there on the first page is four hundred and twenty, utility billing, uh, going up, so we're showing, should the end of this year, about two point six, uh, showing an increase of about two point seven. City Council several years ago passed, uh, an inflation every May, uh, two percent unless, unless pulled back by the council, but it's been growing ever since, and, uh, uh, to keep up with inflation, so, uh, it goes up by two percent, and we're seeing inflation of about three, so, not really keeping up, but staying close. Uh, one good thing, then, line in four, four twenty-three, Reading Township, these are the payments made, uh, to the city from Reading Township, uh, for several years, uh, because of their billing, they were underpaying, we had a meeting, Dave and Julian and I, uh, and laid it out to them, and they understood, and they actually made a, they brought it up to date this year, and moving forward then, we'll also be increasing the fees as the city does, so they're paying, the agreement was they would pay the same as the city, they're doing that, but, I, I don't think it was, it was through their billing issue, it was a, not necessarily, not their fault, but we brought their attention, they were, they, they made remedy, so it was good, so, that number increasing up from what you've seen, council budget was, uh, three hundred and five, and it's going to be coming in about three forty-five, so, this year. On to the next page, uh, everything here is pretty much staying as is, until you get down to line six fifty-nine, uh, treatment plant, uh, contract. That covers, uh, Veolia, our contract with Veolia Water, as well as the, uh, electricity costs for the plant and the lift stations, so it's showing an increase there because of, uh, uh, Veolia usually asks for in the spring, uh, and it, because of the C, our contract's tied with a CPI index, uh, uh, increase every spring, as well as the, the electricity costs going up, so, showing an increase there. The next line, six sixty-seven, machinery repair and maintenance, uh, we usually do a hundred and twenty-five, uh, next year, I'm asking for two seventy-five. Uh, there's, as, I've gotten more familiar down there and Jeff too, there's been a lot of deferred maintenance on things, uh, the council, we just did the big oxidation ditch project, which, uh, not only took care of all the equipment in the ditch, it also put new roofs on, we had terrible leaks, if you guys remember, a couple of years were down there at the, at the meeting, so, uh, those are all good things, uh, but we have some additional, uh, mixers and pumps that are still operating, but I'd like to start maybe putting some mixer, so it's not, everything down there seems to operate on a catastrophe, this mixer went down, this pump went down, we need to start a schedule to get those ahead, so, requesting an additional about a hundred grand there, uh, next year to maybe get ahead of some of those things. Next, over on, uh, next page, sixty-six seventy-five oh nine, six seventy-six oh seven, uh, uh, again, EPA loan payments, and that, we're paying for old projects, and I've got them listed there, so we're paying about a hundred, or about two hundred thousand dollars in loan payments for projects, uh, the traffic addition project in twenty sixteen, uh, wish, an additional wastewater treatment plant project in twenty fifteen, and Center Street in twenty twenty, so, still making payments, and as those come off, it'll free up, uh, where we can get more loans and things for future projects. So, yeah, that's the, last thing on that page, that's really the relevant thing there, you go on to the next page, over to sixty-five, uh, line nine 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 point twenty-two, the transfer to general fund, uh, that's the, uh, transfer of five percent of the revenues, that's, David set that out a couple of years ago, payment in lieu of taxes, so it's helping to supplement the, uh, general fund there, so that's a hundred and fifty-seven. Uh, nine 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 thirty-two, transferred sewer construction, that's what pays for our, uh, annual sewer work, so this year, it's a large, we were paying, uh, working down the cash balance that we had in that fund of a million dollars that paid for our local match for the oxidation ditch project, the, uh, Vermillion Leroy Milner project, all those major sewer projects we had this year, so, a million dollars. Because of all that work that happened this year, you're going to, we're not going to be doing as much work next year, there's a hundred thousand dollars, uh, there for a transfer to the sewer construction, which I'll talk about when we get to fund thirty-two, but basically, what I want to do is no major sewer construction, but want to clean and televise, uh, quite a, quite a few feet of sewers, to kind of look at where our problem spots are and, uh, help the guys out, we don't, we don't have the time or the capability to go out and do miles and miles of the sewer, but if we do a project, we can see where our problems are before we put new roads on top of them, so. That's what the hundred thousand dollars will be for next year. And then nine 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 thirty-three, this is a good thing, we'll talk about in, uh, fund thirty-three in a minute, we, uh, for that oxidation ditch project, we are going to pull sewer depreciation, we have a fund, uh, about one point five million dollars, after we, the, get through this fiscal year, we'll be down to about six hundred thousand. So, that two hundred and fifty next year is to start to build that fund back up, city council, a previous city council passed a policy to try to maintain one point five million dollars in that account, so, over the course of the next four to five years, we're going to try to get back to that, so you'll see two point, or two, two hundred and fifty thousand next year, and you'll see that continuing until we get back to that one point five million number, so we can do a large-scale project like we did this year. That's sewer operating. Any questions? All right, uh, thirty-two sewer construction, again, so the projects that are listed there are what we're going to, uh, do for twenty twenty-five projected, and then down in line five ninety-nine thirty-one, uh, the hundred thousand, that's the project, uh, again, just to, uh, clean and televise some sewers, uh, so about twenty thousand feet, so, close to four, five miles of sewer, so we'll get cleaned and get an assessment of their condition. And then, uh, for this year, again, the five ninety-nine, uh, thirty-three, we're going to transfer in about nine hundred and fifty thousand from that, one point five million that was in that depreciation fund, and then five ninety-nine fifty, transfer in from non-home rule, fund fifty of ninety-five, that is, was budget approved to do the work over on East Main Street. The sewer work that we just got done with over by Central Church and Trinity Lane. Then on the next page, yeah, again, just lays out the, uh, the projects that were completed this year. Any questions? Page sixty-eight, sewer depreciation fund, again, it doesn't look too exciting on this page, but there's money there, cash that's going to be moved around for the next year, at the end of the fiscal year, be able to put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars back in based on our sewer revenues. Uh, fund thirty-four, page seventy, uh, this goes back to the Kent Street Sewer Project that got done in two thousand nine to two thousand and eleven, so we're still making that, uh, EPA loan payment, it was about a fourteen million dollar job, that, this five hundred and six thousand will continue, uh, money comes in from fund fifty, the half-cent sales tax, and then gets, go straight out to EPA to pay for that loan, uh, so five hundred and six thousand comes in, five hundred and six thousand goes out, that'll continue until twenty thirty-four, so, in twenty thirty-four, there'll be an additional half a million dollars available to work with. Any questions on that? That's the sewer funds. You want me to go to fifty?
Yes, fine. You might as well keep rolling.
So then over to fund fifty then, the next one.
Seven seven, page seven seven.
Uh, so this is the half-cent sales tax, uh, the city passed, uh, so revenue there in line three forty-three oh one, uh, because of, uh, inflation and maybe some additional business starts, you're seeing that, uh, those revenues are increasing, so, uh, good news as far as budget-wise goes, but inflation, you can make your own decisions. Line six eighty-nine, that is, is where we pay for our city street improvements, so we talked about our five-year road plan, uh, a couple, a couple of months ago, so it'll fund that, to work up on uh, North Everett, Ralph Plum, Spring Lake Road, and Tea Garden Road, uh, so there's five hundred and fifty thousand, uh, there and for, for this year, and then five hundred thousand for next year. What Jeff talked about, and going back to his budget, twenty-two forty, back in the public works, there was the hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item that helps fund, uh, the road program. The plan for this year is, uh, to bid out our road program, the tree removal, uh, contract that Jeff wants to do, as well as, uh, coming down here, the, it'll be coming up, city facility improvements at six eight nine oh nine, showing five hundred and fifty thousand dollars there, that is to build the phase one, uh, of the Needler Building, uh, that public works, to put the shell up and get ready, uh, for that work. So, the, if approved, the plan would be to bid all three of those jobs, the road job, the tree job, and the, uh, public works facility at Needler on the same day, and then you can make the decision budgetarily, how to proceed, so, from there, so, uh, the five hundred and the five twenty-five and the hundred and fifty, hopefully, will be enough to make all three of those projects move ahead, but you'll be able to make a informed decision, uh, at the time toward those contracts. You can say, yes, we want to do this one, we'd rather do this, so, but, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for trees, five hundred thousand for the road program, and the five twenty-five for the, uh, for the city, facility improvements, uh, hopefully will, uh, it'll, it'll, it'll take down the cash balance of this fund, uh, but the money's there, uh, to do it. Uh, the one thing, then, as far as transfers go, uh, transfer out to sewer construction, nine ninety-nine thirty-two, that's the, uh, that's the East Main Street, oh, transfer to general, nine ninety-nine twenty-two, transfer to general fund, the five sixty-five, that pays for the community development department, like we talked about, Dean and I, as those, but for this year's projects, the five, that five sixty-five is paying for that, the Bosnich lighting project and the, uh, fire station they just got done. So, they talked about, uh, doing that ramp, the money's actually coming from fund fifty and goes into the general fund to fund it. So, we were anticipating a nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar, uh, transfer, and there was, uh, you know, basically, that money was going to come out of fifty and fund the projects that were talked about as Logan's Oasis, all those things, but the projects that actually got done this year are, uh, Bosnich and the fire station, so that's, that's what that five sixty-five is, leaving cash available for next year. Logan's Oasis. Oh, yeah, is that, uh, transfer to general fund for next year, uh, that nine nine twenty-two, there's a hundred and, uh, hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that five twenty-five for Logan's Oasis. Any questions on those? Then on the fund fifty-one is the public benefit fund, uh, so that's where we pay for our sidewalk reimbursements, so, uh, we have a program that the city will reimburse, uh, for homeowners to do sidewalk work. So, taxes collected, uh, past several years are fifteen thousand, and we just put that back out to people to do those projects, so, that's what that fund is. Uh, fund sixty is the grant fund. So the grants, uh, grant fund on four eleven, the grants up there at the top, uh, we're showing, uh, the one five nine eight for next year is the, uh, incubator project, so that's the incubator, uh, funds, and then there's the, uh, grant funds for the, uh, housing redevelopment grant that we got, and we're going to rehab ten homes, so, that's those two lines put together, uh, for revenues. Uh, five nine nine twenty-nine, at the bottom of the page, is the transfer in from Tiff four, we talked about, is our local match, uh, for the incubator project. And then page eighty-three has the actual, uh, expenses, so six fifty-seven fifty contracted services is where the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, for the grant, for the DCO grant for the housing rehab is, and then city facility improvement, six eight nine oh nine, is the, uh, one million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar incubator project, so as I, as I said, we have a waiting on approval to award, and then we can award and make that project happen, so. Anything on sixty? One more for me, and then there'll be fund seventy-one. So fund seventy-one is our MFT fund, looks like page eighty-nine or eighty-eight, so, our MFT revenues come in, uh, for next year, line six thirty- next year, line 630, pays for the public works materials like it always does. That pays for our stone, coal patch, oil, and chips for our spray patch machine. Line 631 is where we purchased salt, so small increase there just because everything's going up. And then 689, city street improvement. The way we laid out the five-year program is Iowa Avenue actually got done ahead of schedule. So it was actually our project for '25 and '26, but those numbers there for '25 and '26 are actually, once we get invoices from the state, we have to pay them. We're still having a final invoice for 12th Street. We have a final invoice for the Safe House and Schools project over in Riverside, and we have not received any invoice yet for Iowa. So we'll be making payments.
Kelly.
Kelly Street Bridge, too. So, yeah, Kelly Street Bridge, we'll be making a payment on that in next year's budget. So those lines under 689, that 1.3 million this year, 600,000 next year, that could change based on when the cash is sitting there waiting to go back to the state. And so far, they haven't sent us a bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evan and I will go through with the couple general fund departments that haven't been hit yet, starting on page 42. 42 is the debt service, so just the existing bond and taxable payments on the projects that are out there. It'll be about 450,000 in it this year. Moving on to the next, the non-departmental on page 44. That's where we pay for retire reinsurance out of, we pay for the audit, workers' liability, workers' count liability insurance. And then we pay a portion of the PPRP to the library and hold the maintenance The only other things in there are the 999 accounts that transfer out to Tiff 3 is Fordham Business District tax, which has jumped up. That'll be about 87,500 next year. And then the supplement to Anderson Fields to make that one net neutral budget will be about 75,000 for next year.
The Business Development District is 1% sales tax in addition to regular sales tax, just imposed on North Point Chucky Center, I believe, theater. And that was done as part of a development agreement with the Sioux County Northern Point Development.
Good. I'll run through the last seven funds, and then we'll close it out. We'll go back to the revenue side, so how we're going to pay for the rest of it. So page 46, the hotel motel tax fund. This is going to be the trickiest one of the remaining funds. Fund balance of about 40,000, budgeted a deposit of about 16,000 for 2026. We lowered the revenue to about 16,000 for next year's budget, just with some decreased activity in this fund that we've seen. So there's just the one hotel within city limits, I believe. So just
We have two.
There's two.
Underperforming.
But looking long-term of this fund, the revenues have been declining, expenses have stayed about the same. So that's all I had for hotel motel for 2026. Page 49 is going to be the solid waste fund. This one does include the increase with the new waste management contract on both the revenue and the expense side. So about a $300,000 increase to the utility billing here, it's a 1.5 million. And then on the expense side, the waste management contract did go up about 7% compared to 2025. And then the salaries and wages are just a portion of admin staff to support the utility billing pieces of that. Any questions, solid waste? Next, we'll get into Anderson Fields on page 73. This is another one that's sort of supported by the general fund, so we'll get into transfers at the end, which has come from a plug number based on the anticipated revenues and expenses. Grains fees were slightly elevated this year just to some prolonged good weather. We left those about the same, small increase to revenue next year.
Yeah, we also had a rate increase.
The rate increase, too. And then most of the expenses stayed stagnant except for some minor increases and decreases just for individual line items, but no major changes to this fund as a whole. Next one I'll hit is page 85, the library renovation fund. This one essentially just functions as a pass-through for the bond activity for the library renovation project. So it's a balanced fund. Money comes in, money goes out, it's already set, so no changes to that fund. Starting on page 91 is the police pension fund, which again essentially functions as a pass-through in this capacity where it's property tax in, that gets levied for, that same dollar amount gets transferred out into the police pension fund. The next two pages, the fire pension, functions the exact same way. Those numbers, we'll have updates to them on a final budget pending the tax levy discussion. Last one I'll touch is just the library fund, another basically pass-through. Property taxes come in based on tax levy discussion. Those same dollar amounts will go out over to the library. So again, a net zero fund, the numbers will have some changes pending the discussion, but no net revenue or expenses. Any questions on those handful of funds before we get into the revenues?
Anyone need a restroom break or anything? Just checking.
All right, if we want to go to page 7. And we'll look at the general fund revenue projections. The first section there are all property taxes. For today's meeting, we left them the same as last year. I think we'll wrap up with kind of the property tax discussion after this. Looking at some of the other major revenue sources, sales tax has overperformed from what was budgeted last year. We're also projecting a 2.7% increase for the next year. So that's up about 90,000 over last year. And I'm not going to hit on every line, I'm going to stay big picture and just hit on the major sources. On page 8, one of note is line 425, the EMS billing account. Right now, we have it at 1.2 million. When we were putting this document together, we were going through the GTMT payback to the state and trying to flush out what that was going to look like. I think we can probably bump that number up. I think we're probably going to be closer to 1.4, 1.5 million, which is good news in this scenario. So we'll get that updated for the next draft, but I wanted to point that one out. And it was an increase from what we mentioned in last year. The next section there are franchise, utility, and other taxes, going down about 60 grand, just looking at the trends of the cable TV and telecom tax. Those have been trending downward the past couple of years, and they seem to keep doing that. Not too much change overall for the gas, electric, and water taxes. Video gaming is worth noting. That one has continued to keep bouncing back, so we've been conservative with the expectations there. But every year, it seems that it's exceeding it. So we did do a relatively sizable 45,000 increase in the video gaming line. Onto page 9. Some of the state shared revenues there in the middle of the page. The personal property replacement tax, we're budgeting again lower. I think we finally bottomed out on that line. If you recall, from a couple of years ago, the state over-allocated that tax, so it really spiked where it doubled over the course of like two years. And then they have since corrected, and we're more in line with. I know this doesn't go back to '22, but in 2022, it was like 350,000. So we're still up from that number, but we're nowhere near the million that we have received in 2023. Income taxes is still trending upward. I don't know that there's any other of note major ones until we get on to page 10.
Excuse me, Steve?
Yes?
I have a question on line 410, gifts and contributions from the public. This year, it looks like we got 75,000? What was that?
Logan's Oasis, probably.
Okay.
Yeah, they wrote us a check, and then we sent it, so the no sales tax.
Right. If we bought it, they wouldn't pay tail.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just
Yeah, the community foundation sent us a check, and we sent a check.
That's a big donation.
Absolutely. And then on page 10, there we show at the bottom our transfers in that were mentioned from when we went through the other funds. We have our transfer in from the sewer operating, kind of our 5% there. And then we have the transfer in from the non-home rule sales tax, which funds the engineering. I know I won't do those kind of fast. Any questions on any of those individual lines or categories or big picture? And then I think the last piece then, to round off the revenues, is really the property taxes, which we skipped over. There's an additional handout for this one, which you should all have at the top, which is the city street or 2025 tax levy request. So this is obviously open to discussion, but to kind of kick off, to kind of set the stage, the big one that has been the hit here the past couple of years has been the increase in pension costs. So that was kind of the first thing we factored in. To stay at the 100% recommended level based on the actuarial reports, between police and fire is an increase of about 140,000. So that right off the top was like a 3%, 3.5% increase over the prior year's extension. We do have the libraries request, which also gets implemented into the city's tax levy, which was almost a $27,000 increase over the prior year. But they stayed to the 4.99% increase level. So all of that, even before we factored in any other increase to the city, we were at 160, almost 170,000 increase over the prior year. The scenario that you have in front of you is also trying to capture a little bit of increase to the city operations. We have about 64,000 would be the total increase to the city itself to fund operations, with the total from the tax levy of just under 230,000 or a 4.99% increase over the prior year's taxes.
499 of the levy amount, that's the total amount collected in cash. But the rate will actually go down because there was a significant increase in the assessed value of the community, at least a part of the community in LaSalle County, that 115%. So you can increase the levy by 4.99%, which is the standard that we want. We don't want to go above. It not like triggers an extra public hearing?
Yeah, if you go above that, you trigger the truth in taxation.
I think it's also recognition that it's, you know, it's an ask of our community, you pay 5% more per year, even though their property values went up. So the proposal here would decrease the rate from last year. Last year was 3.19, and decrease to 2.91. So if your A and B did not increase in your house, you're actually going to pay less coming here. And we could come up with other alternatives, but in prior years, we always come back to the 499 saves. In large part because, as Steve mentioned, just making our pension payments consumes most of the earnings. And then we throw in library, there isn't much left for everything else.
Thanks for the new council. Last year, the pension and library increased, and we decreased general fund about 27,000, I think, and still went with a 4.99 levy increase.
We've had to do that a couple of times over the past few years. We increased the property tax levy to 499, but the amount of property tax is funding the general funding, it goes down. It's diverted to pensions and library.
Property taxes have a chokehold on our community. There's good families that are struggling. They're paying more in property taxes than they are for their mortgages. There's families moving out of our community because of the property taxes, good quality families, people with high incomes that are tired of paying taxes, that are willing to do some traveling to our town still to work, or hire for the good wage. I don't like that a bit.
I think, so we can look at other scenarios and give actions maybe at the next meeting, but
Of course, it's all a conversation. There's no hard lines in the sands.
If there's other If there's other scenarios you'd like us to prepare, yeah, we can certainly do so. That was all I had in terms of revenues. Do you want to have any other questions?
How much do we have to bring this down to get it balanced?
1.7 million.
So if you look in your packet at the beginning, there is a general fund summary and an all fund summary.
I'll be coming back with new recommendations, Steve. The whole point of tonight is to see the big picture.
You've got to start somewhere.
Hear everything.
Yep.
And then it comes down to where, what are the priorities, what do we want to fund, what pension fund. But unfortunately, our pension funds are underfunded. By making 100% contributions over the last couple of years, we have improved the condition of those funds, but they're still not well-funded. The fire pension fund, six years ago, was probably 28% funded. Now it's around 40, a little over 40% funded. And fire, or police is roughly today around 50 something percent.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Where it was a few points below that a few years ago. So we are making headway. We're not making huge progress, but it's not going the other direction.
No. Currently, it's 90% funded by 2024. And so
What's the industry standard to be funded?
Oh, you probably
It's all actuarial. So this is your first one, so that whole process, I guess. Every year, there's an actuary that'll look at, they're estimating retirement age, employee, number of employees, how long are they going to, I mean, so they're reviewing that every year.
Predictably.
So we get this report every year that says So we get this report every year that says this date, and they're, they're guessing on what income or what interest we're gonna make, and just throwing it out. And so we are, we have to fund by law, and to top it, Dave, if you find anything wrong, but by law, we are obligated to fund the pensions. We need to, whatever that actuary comes at, we need to do ninety percent or more prior to any other money that comes in from real estate taxes. So we have to provide that payment in funds. There is, and I don't know if it's where it's at, Senate bill, it did not get out of the house. So there was a Senate bill to do a tier-two pension benefit enhancement, which was gonna re, re, change it to twenty fifty-five to ninety percent, but increase pension benefits. That did not pass, but it's probably gonna come back up in the spring session. So, you know, your 401K, whatever, IRA, whatever you have, the more you can put in now, the better you are down the road, that's kind of where we are. But we're coming, right now, we have fifteen years to make a, make an eastbound and down, long way to go in a short time to get there. We're gonna help them.
Gotta be done.
My four-year-old likes track driving songs, we listen to that a lot. That's kind of where we.
Well, that's the story is clear, our property taxes really go to fund the cost of services that were delivered to the community years ago in, in the form of the police fire pension payments. Well, I, that's not entirely fair, because we have current obligations that we're also funding. It goes into the, into the mix, but those obligations, since we have to make up from underfunding in years past, or at least under, maybe forward investments in years past, our contributions relative to the size of our overall cost of operating the two departments.
Yeah, I think in the actuarial report, they break it down, your normal cost, and then they break out like the unfunded, unamortized piece, basically to catch up to get to that ninety percent. And I would say two-thirds of the contribution is underfunding from previous years.
And that, I mean, that goes way. You're probably still preschool when this was happening.
I'm an old man.
Yeah, nobody in this building today, it was class A.
And just, and I don't, this is not a dig at pensions or whatever, but in two thousand and six, I looked, I ran through so many years of property tax levies. So in two thousand and six, thirty, just under thirty-four percent of the tax, property tax levy went to pension payments. And last year's budget was fifty-seven and a half percent. What is coming in is coming out, so it's. So it's growing, but we're finally making progress.
And when it comes time for us to borrow two, that will affect our interest rate, and we get rated by the five, sure.
So we won't be voting on this next week?
No. This will be decided. I'll work with you with recommendations as to how we get the balance.
So we have eleven nineteen, so next week's meeting today, maybe?
Yes.
And then we have December nine, and then December seventeen, because of our regular council.
Yeah, to affect the budget, we'll need to file orders to do the levy, well, it's probably not like, probably not as, make it available to the county, so.
Any, anything you need to add?
Well, if there's a project or an item that you want included in the budget that isn't in there, the sooner you can tell me, the better, because that's obviously gonna affect everything else.
I probably have fifteen million of projects I can come up with. So which one is the most important?
I'm good to continue.
Any direction on our other scenarios you want to look at? I see that the percent would be with no increase in general fund and just what's there?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a percent than this?
Miss Tandy.
If we look at just levy increase without increasing general fund?
About what, sixty, you said?
Yeah, it would be about sixty thousand dollars less, in terms of percentage, it's probably more, more-ish.
Anything you feel absolutely has to be in the budget that we didn't talk about?
We need to hear what Dave's recommendations are, then.
Yeah, we can look at review.
I'm about halfway there.
Okay.
All right, and anything else on the budget? Hour used, two hours and two minutes in, do you want to go to executive session?
Do we have something to discuss?
That's what I meant, yeah.
Oh, you're ready, okay.
Yeah, if we have something to discuss, let's do it.
Sure, ready to roll.
If we don't have anything.
This group's ready to vote tonight. Okay, so I will request a motion and second to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussion of legal matters under ILC S one twenty slash two, items one and two of the Illinois empowered statutes for personnel and collective bargaining. Can I get a motion and second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gary with the motion, and Mr. Reed with the second. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Dan go.
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary, be back.
Aye.